Good morning. We'll call this morning's meeting the order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and there is an addition to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of approval of a one-day liquor license for Harvest Hope Farm.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, we'll move into our employee recognition's behalf this morning. Okay, today we got two very important people in our departments here. First one with 25 years service, Ann. First thing you can do is tell us how to pronounce your last name. Okay. Ann's been with us for 25 years and been a great -- I know she's been a great benefit to the Highway Department and stuff like that, and done a lot of good work. Justin, you're on.
Yeah, so I just want to thank Ann for everything, especially in this last year. She's been an extremely helpful person for me, and I know everybody at the Highway Department appreciates what she does. I don't want to be here all morning. I couldn't list all the things that she does for the department, but it definitely does not go unnoticed, and I wanted to say thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And another very important person in our department, Troy Amundson with 30 years. Yeah, don't look around, Troy. No, Troy's done a lot of good work for us and got a big project going now. I drove by this morning and I see they're digging, so we've got that project going. Troy, for 30 years of service to the county, thank you very much. And Kathy?
Twenty minutes.
You've got one minute.
Congrats, Troy. I've only been able to manage him for seven years out of his 30 years, so the other 23 was in juvenile detention, so I only have about a half an hour list from the seven years. I hope you can bear with me. So he was hired in 2016 for Detox as a Detox Director, and it's been an eventful seven years. We hired a leader in the year after Troy started, and then we had the infamous DHS onsite review for Detox. Troy had only been there a year and a few months, so that's for those that have never been through a DHS review of a program. It's very intense. The people that do it are very intense, and it's stressful. So Troy got to experience the stress all the way around there. And then, of course, COVID. We have a 24/7 unit, and we have a couple of those as well in addition to Detox, but it's very challenging to handle trying to deal with clients that have COVID and isolating them in our Detox when they need our Detox. And then staffing is challenging with all the COVID staff, so that was another huge thing to go through in the seven years. He also was instrumental in adding a withdrawal management license. That was an additional license. We had a Detox license through DHS and MDH, but the withdrawal management license is essential for Minnesota clients that are on MA. Not only it provides additional services, we had to add staffing for that, but it also is a revenue source that we can bail MA for that. He was, as Commissioner Gross mentioned, instrumental in this new building, starting from grant writing, which was a pretty significant amount of time, dedicated to writing that grant, and then the success of receiving the $5 million to kind of get our facility started. So there's a few things. There's lots of other things. I promise not to go on any longer. So Troy, congratulations for your dedication, perseverance, loyalty to the county for those 30 years. I know you love this, but they're going to look forward to the next 20 years, so you'll be here 50. That'll be awesome. And thanks for putting up with me for the last seven. That's the most grueling.
Congratulations to both of you. First thing, let's see, what do we need next? Payment of bills and vouchers. Oh, wait, excuse me, citizens to be heard. I'm sorry. Is there any citizens in the audience that want to discuss something that's not on the Anybody online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that will go into the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion as second to pay bills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve of the minutes from May 23rd.
Move for approval of the minutes from May 23rd.
No second.
Okay, any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll take that first, the agenda item, the addition, request to approve a one-day liquor license for Harvest Hope Farm.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion there, Steve?
Nothing else, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll go into Plays of Hope Annual Update. Daryl, want to take us into that?
Thank you for having me. Just giving you a little update on where we're at and where we're going at a place for hope. It's kind of exciting. We've been here now for 25 years. We just had our open house a couple Mondays ago, and it was really, really nice for individuals to come out and see our facility and see how we're growing and what we're doing. I think you all did receive our impact report, so hopefully you had a little chance to look through it. We did last year have to spend about $20,000 purchasing food as the Great Plains Food Bank donations were down, and they were not able to purchase as much food as they used Again, I think I was here, I think, October of last year because our landlord raised our rent $12,000. You were good enough to find some ARPA funds, and so did BICAO, but now we're kind of asking for some kind of sustaining funds to cover that rent increase. We have not had an increase in seven years, as far as I can see. I've been there five, and we hadn't had any, and our rent does include our electricity and our water. So anything could do along that line would be very much appreciated. We've been trying to entice our members to come back after the COVID-19. We're trying all kinds of new activities. I think the individuals got into a different mode in two years, different things that they were doing. So we've sent out postcards, that type of thing. They're slowly coming back. I could see it in the make lunch every day for the volunteers and the members, and those numbers are increasing quite a bit, and they're attending a lot of the new activities we're doing. We're just getting ready to start our annual Let's Go Fishing trips to Detroit Lakes, and that starts next -- actually, it starts tomorrow, so we'll be heading out for there. We did have one kind of oops thing. Somebody vandalized our van, punctured our gas tank, so we've just gotten that repaired. That was a couple thousand dollars. Our insurance covered a lot of it, but not all of it. So there's always something that's going on. We don't know exactly when it happened, but anyway, we've got it repaired and we're moving We did have a lot of nice donations last year from several different groups, including the Otter Bremer Foundation. They actually gave us $50,000, and $40,000 of that was for me to hire and basically assistant or manager of our food shelf area. So that's been very, very helpful, trying to run the mental health side, which is the one side of the building, our food shelf, which is on the other. So that's been very, very helpful, and including to the $40,000 for that, they gave us $10,000 for purchasing food. We had very gracious donations from Crystal, about $10,000 last year. And then with the amount of food that we got, which was close to 400,000 pounds, they value that at $3.15 a pound. That value of the food is $1.2 million, just to give you an idea of what we did not have to buy. We've had about $146,000 worth of volunteer hours. It's close to 10,000 hours, and that is still continuing as we go on this year. So far this year, we're seeing dramatic increases in the food shelf side. We've had to cut down, allowing them to come in to every three weeks. We used to be at one. We started at one. We went to every two weeks, and now we're at every three, just so we can accommodate the numbers that are coming in with the hours that we have and the volunteers that we have. So far this year, we've distributed about 168,000 pounds of food, and we've had 4,300 volunteer hours, and we've had to purchase about $10,000 worth of food. So I visited with Rhonda and Kathy just a little bit to kind of think about how we might look at if we could possibly get some increases. I put together a budget for the mental health side and for the food shelf side, and we get our money from the mental health side. And my budget there is about $10,000 short from the revenue versus the expenses. And on the food shelf side, we're about $56,000 would be my budget there. I've included that $40,000 from the Otter Tail Bremer grant. So it just kind of gives us an idea that if we would look at both sides, we're about $66,000 short. I've been trying, I've been raising as much money as I can with grants. I'm doing everything myself, so I do as what I can to try to meet our needs. But anyway, that's where we're at. What we really need for sure is a sustainable rent increase, and anything else we could get to help with, help, wages, whatever, on the food shelf side. Is there any questions?
I just know I've got a couple of friends from Dillwood that work out there in the mornings. I think it's Thursday morning or something like that, but still, giving me a good report on that, on your place there, how important it is, how many people come in and benefit from what you're doing out there.
Yeah. It's been very interesting. We're seeing a lot of different ethnicities. I just purchased some little transmitters that translate the languages. I just got them yesterday, so we're going to try that because we had a translator come in one day a week, and of course, we don't always have those people there that one day. So I tried to find something else, and this was very economical. So we talked about it at our BICAO meeting last Friday in Fergus, and they're looking at me being the guinea pig and trying these out, so hopefully it works because everybody's having the same situation right now. Oh, I should mention, I just saw on the news on NMA that Becker County, and I think Otter Tail, or you know, Otter Bremer Foundation, put together a fundraising thing, and they're actually building a brand-new food shelf out there in Detroit Lakes. Along that line, I am starting to see if we can find somebody to help us build a building of our own because $4,500 a month is an awful lot for rent. We're doing actually a national search. We belong to a foundation search organization, and they will help us try to find maybe 50 to 100 national donors that might help us find a food shelf that we could buy land, build a building that we want because we cannot find anything in more yet. There's just nothing available out there.
I'll have to get the name of that place so we can probably do that for some of our buildings, too.
Yeah, just make a comment. And Daryl, just thank you so much for your work. You and I have gotten to know each other much better over the last couple of months, and I've been out there a couple of times. Just the, for me, just seeing the information that's come from you and what I've seen when you've done your pop-ups out in front of your building for people and for food and coordinating with Great Plains Food Shelf and assisting them. I mean, it does sell me how much, how great the need is and how many people show up. And it's just all over the board. It just isn't one little sector or area. It's everybody, or it's a big area. So appreciate the work. It is, when I go there and I see the people that do come and you provide lunches for them, I mean, it's a one-man shop there with the help of a lot of people. And anyway, I just applaud you for the work that you're doing and hope we find a way here to help you out with sustaining the rent.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Okay. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you for your report. Okay, next time we got Joe with change order requests for the joint facility cold storage capital project.
Good morning. I brought Justin with me, too. He's been involved in this project as well. What we're doing is currently, right now, there's no aprons that were planned in this project. As we shifted our building, we kind of determined that aprons would probably be better. Maybe you want to explain a year better?
Yeah, so with shifting the building, we had to cut out some concrete to remove some footing, so there would have been aprons in the building had we not had to remove the footings to allow for the shift of the building.
Yeah. So what, we're pouring concrete in a couple of weeks, so we had them price this out as an additional cost, so we got a good price on it since they were going to be there anyway. So total cost of this would be $5,445, so we're requesting to add two 10-by-18 aprons that, on each side of the building.
Yep.
And we have these funds in the capital. We have just some, just a little bit remaining of the bond money that we need to spend. I don't say need to spend, but it's dollars we have to spend by a certain date, and we have some left over on that to help fund this. Questions for us?
You heard of availability for the concrete? Are you worried about that?
Yeah, he said--
They emailed us yesterday and said the 19th of June, they'd be able to do it.
Yep. Yep. And that's the same time they'll be pouring all the other concrete that we've come earlier, so it's a good timing anyway. So I think overall, it would be a better, you know, keep the dirt--
Yeah, so it'll be, we have two overhead doors in our new cold storage, and it would just be aprons. So when they come in, obviously, we have a gravel lot that is a muddy mess right now.
Yeah.
So it would just be avoiding tracking into the new cold storage building.
Okay.
Well, this, adding that to the buildings is definitely not something you're going to regret. I agree with the mess inside. You're going to have all of that gravel tracked in. Certainly don't have a problem with it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the additional cement project? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to have a new department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I lead one of the smallest and mightiest little group of folks that we've got here at the county, and we do a lot of different things, and we're pretty agile, and we adapt to whatever seems to be needed, and we do those. But what we found is those, the things that we're doing are really, fall into two categories, and I've talked about that before when I give my department updates. We're doing either GIS-type stuff or communications-type stuff, but we do a lot of those things all the time. A decade ago, a little more than a decade ago, when we first developed our department, we were called Information Services, along with our sister department was Technology Services. That worked really well when we were co-located here on the third floor, and no matter what came in, we were able to handle it and send it to the right people. What's happened is now that we are no longer located in this building, it's causing some confusion for some of our customers, our clients, staff, whoever it might happen to be, of which department to go to to get their best, get what they need. So because of that, I've been thinking about it for a long time, I think, that we need to change the name of what we call our department specifically to identify more specifically what we do. And one of the things I'm remembering is 11 years ago, when I came here and asked to create the Information Services, where I remember Commissioner Campbell asked me the question, "Is having the word 'information' in your title a good idea?" And the answer is, "No, it's a really bad idea," mostly because we get all the phone calls that don't fit any other category. My staff have been pretty, become pretty adept at figuring out what needs to go where and all the other services our county departments handle. But I think that that's part of the confusion we're trying to fix here is that we're not, we don't, you know, we're trying to be a little more specific about what we're doing. So what I'm really asking for is effective the beginning of next year, so with the next budget cycle, we'll change the name of our department to GIS and Communications because that's the two things we do. And I think that will clear up a lot of confusion from our users, our staff, all those people. There's not any cost to this really because the only expense would be the time it's going to take to change the names in some of our systems, but we don't have any signage that needs to change or anything like that.
Okay. Any questions?
Not a question, but comment. Both Commissioner Gross and I were part of the pick committee discussion where Mark had brought this forward, and this probably would have come to the board sooner. I just had a little bit harder time personally trying to grapple through to make sure that we are making a change that makes the most sense. You know, Mark has really thought this through, and as we look holistically at the county and how do we communicate where citizens reach out and what department makes the most sense, it really has become-- Thank you. Mark's department has kind of become a catch-all for some of these questions, and it's, you know, great, your staff does it and responds friendly when that happens, but how do we provide clear direction to citizens? I really do think this is a great step forward. In terms of clarity, we felt that waiting until the next year makes the most sense, so having it effective January 1st seemed to make the most sense. And then, too, as we look at the website, which I think you--
Right.
--also commented on, we'll be deliberate to make sure that when there is a question or concern that doesn't fit within a clear department, we have an area that residents and staff can reach out to for clarity.
Thank you. I just want to, I think it's a good idea. I'm glad somebody recognized that the name "information" probably wasn't appropriate for your department.
Yeah.
I mean, it's too overwhelming, is what I want.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just curious, on the communications side, how does that, how does that correlate when we have a communications coordinator that's not part of your department?
Okay, so that, we work closely with Jackie, and she works closely with us. We're co-located now. We're right together. I think for right now, it's going to work fine. A really great example of that happened yesterday where she's, her role is to kind of work with Steve and all the stuff that's going on and identify what needs to happen, and if it's social media and those kind of things, she's been taking care of that. But like yesterday, she came to us and said, "We need a sign that says you have to park on the north side of the mall for GMV." And she came to us, and by noon, we had a sign up that said that. So that's kind of how, I think, we see it as a, we'll work together and it'll be okay.
I guess I was thinking more from the standpoint about who authorizes the messaging going out type of thing, because I think we've established a, what do you want to call it, a hierarchy or that type of thing for that process? And I just want to make sure that this doesn't create any confusion in that.
I sure hope not.
Okay.
Well, and I think if you look at the tier, the next tier up that really isn't, is our administrator. And so our administrator works with the communications coordinator and the GIS and Communications to coordinate what that message is, and that's really why we thought hiring Jackie made, or Jackie's position made the most sense, is to make sure it was one message coming out, similar to Highway Department and Jackie and administration.
Right.
Have any motion on that?
Well, I had, I had heard you say July 1st.
January 1st.
Okay, I thought I heard you say July.
It'd be the new 2024 fiscal year is when we'll--
Okay.
So when I come back next month with my budget, it will be the new name budget.
And that was my concern. If the board feels differently, that's fine. I just was worried about changing the name of a department mid-budget cycle.
So was, was it the recommendation of the pick committee to move forward with this January 1st?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would so move.
Second.
We've got a motion as second to approve the change in the name of the department. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get her done.
Will do.
Okay, the next thing we got is request to approve the wave tax penalties for Bennett Park.
Good morning.
So we did mute Annette. I don't know if she knows that.
Hi, what, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes. We're waiting to connect Annette. Annette, would you be able to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Oh, are you on, on two different lines?
Hello? I'm on my phone.
Okay. There.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Okay, I think now we got you.
All right. Morning.
Good morning, Annette.
So in April, I received an email forward from Dan Gordon at North Country Co-op and Nathan Akri from the City of Morehead Assessors Office regarding taxes that we're owing on some parcels in Bennett Park. I guess the email stated that they're going to be demolishing, rehabbing, and reselling some of the homes. Two of these parcels have delinquent taxes owing, and Joan Emzick, on behalf of Bennett Park Board, is requesting to get the taxes and the penalties waived so they can move
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this, we have two reasons why penalty taxes can be waived, penalties can be waived. This technically does not meet either of the criteria that we have set for us. Having said that, part of what needs to happen, we have Kent here, but part of, part of the challenge that we, that we're running into is they can't, the park board or park president can't do the work there unless they have title. They can't have title unless there's, if there's a tax issue. There, the people that have lived there have moved out. They're, they've reached, those that they've, that have forwarded information, they've reached out. In talking with Lori Johnson, our auditor, we anticipate that there's not a means that we're going to ever get this money from, from the, from the citizens that owned the property at the time. And so it becomes a situation where some of the cases, they are dilapidated already or blighted property. It requires, requires the board's action here to, it would require the board's action to remove the taxes, and then only at that point could the wave, could the demolition permits be provided, both by the City of Morehead and Clay County.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the, the property is privately owned, right? And so if those, if those penalties are waived, are the taxes themselves going to be paid in full?
No, it would be taxes and penalties that they're requesting to be waived.
Okay, and then what's the, what's the assurance, so is the ultimate goal here that that land will change ownership?
Yeah, I believe with the two parcels that are delinquent, they're saying that they want to demolish them, the two parcels or the two mobile homes and put in new ones. But they can't do that without a certification that there's no taxes owing.
So, so it doesn't, the, it doesn't change the fact that the same owners would still have it and could potentially go into delinquency again?
Bennett Park is looking to, and North Country are looking to get a title for these. So then these homes will be destroyed and new ones will be put in its place. The owners own the mobile home, not the lot itself.
Okay, I see.
And the taxes are on the home itself.
Okay, all right.
Do they own a lot of mobile homes? I mean, what percentage of mobile homes do they own that are in the park?
In Bennett Park, um, I'm not 100% sure. Let me just look and see if I can find something.
I'm just trying to see what's the, if we forgive these penalties, what would be the purpose of them paying other taxes?
Well, I think that the point is that the people that own these trailers at this point are not there. They're, it would be cleaning them out, which would allow new people to come in into that area who are willing to pay their taxes.
I think, Mr. Chair, too, the issue would be, I mean, eventually, they're just going to become more nuisance property. I mean, if they just keep sitting there, eventually, whether it's rats, vermin, whatever else, eventually, the county and/or city would have to do condemnation action, more court action to do something with this method, at least the ownership of the property is already taking interest, notes that it's, it's already blighted and getting worse, so, and there is no ownership paying it. So by removing the tax piece, you're then looking to tear down those places, at least make them usable property again. I think eventually, if they just sat there, eventually, what they'll become is a nuisance and then we'd have to.
Well, I agree with what they're trying to do and I agree with that, you know, but I'm just looking at, what about the next person that doesn't, doesn't want to pay their taxes or whatever? Are we setting the precedence, I guess is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, there's roughly 60 parcels, roughly.
60 parcels that they own and with the trailers on them?
That are in Bennett Park.
Okay.
For clarification, this is the development that's kind of behind, like stop and go by the 20th Street underpass, correct? Yes, okay, all right. So Steve, in your beginning comments, you said there are a couple of reasons how we could waive them and you said that didn't fall within those. Is there an avenue that allows us to do this?
Well, I think as any policy that this board establishes, you have the, you have the ability to act outside of that policy. And so the board's wishes were to move forward on this, you certainly would have that ability. And as Brian said, I mean, as we've talked through this, this process, being that we have a willing participant to address the issue, it really is going to be potentially less work than if we have to go through the condemnation process, so.
So could you somewhat give a timeline? I guess I'm a little confused if we were going to waive, I mean, there's going to be a change of title, right? And at that time, when that change is made, the taxes need to be paid in full, right? That's, okay. But so there are, somebody's going to be paying something, but they're just asking that this piece, the penalties, be waived.
There's not going to be any taxes.
Tax and penalty.
Tax and penalty.
Tax and penalty.
They're going to waive.
I see, okay.
Mr. Chair, what's in our document, it says to waive tax penalties in the amount of $2,300. Doesn't say anything about actual taxes, it refers to it as penalties.
They listed the prepay, the prepay is listed there and Annette, what we've talked about with the honor treasurer Lori Johnson is, we're not looking to have them waive the prepay because kind of, I think to your questions, Commissioners, is at some point, that timeline is they could have somebody in that, in that position that then would be responsible for that, that fee.
So, and the reason I ask about the timeline, would we, would you, do we want to give a waiver first or do we wait till the title is being executed so these taxes or whatever are due are paid? Or maybe a misunderstanding, it just seems like I'm missing the.
Can you maybe give a little bit of the process that we'll have, would have to go through?
Is to give a waiver and then, to your point, I don't, you know, and then what happens if something doesn't happen and now they still owe taxes?
Ken, turn on your mic.
Turn your mic.
Yes, good morning. Ken Severson, Environmental Health. We do the licensing inspections for Bennett Park. You know, to summarize, what we're doing here or the request is part of a process to, and I believe the number is six mobile homes that are, there's interest in removing from the park. I'm not clear on if we're talking about all six in this juncture, but overall, there's, there's homes that need to be removed. The lots that they're on are owned by the Co-op, but the trailers were owned privately in order to get the demolition, in order to do this to those trailers, title needs to be in hand. We don't have that, we don't have contact with the previous owners. In order to transfer the title and have the title to, the title to demolish and the trailers, this part that we're speaking about now with the fees and taxes is part of that process to alleviate the tie-ups with the titles and get them in hand so that these homes can be removed and then new homes can come in. And those would be privately owned as well. So speaking to the, the part about the future and setting a precedent on those, you know, being late on taxes or whatnot, these would be new homes with new owners that would come in at that point, if that helps.
Is it, is it meant to be a claim date then? Or are they going to transfer? I mean.
Meant to be what?
They're transferring title, correct?
They're trying.
The mobile homes are, yeah, the mobile homes are dealt with motor vehicle, so there's no deeds.
Oh, I was thinking.
It's a transfer of title.
Land under is owned by the park.
The park owns.
Okay.
This raises more questions for me. Mr. Chair, if I can, so who's paying for the demolition?
I believe that would be the Co-op.
Okay, so they are paying it, but they don't, they can't do it because of these tax liens on it. Is that, is that in essence what's going on here?
They can't do that because of not owning the titles and to get the titles, the tax liens come into play in order to get that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, maybe I can just read the one part, the letter from Mr. Nims, just says, "We are asking the county to waive these taxes since the owners cannot be located and the homes have zero value and likely need to be demolished. Through our partnerships with nonprofits and the City of Morehead, we have secured funding to remove these homes, but the process is held up by title and tax issues." So we're just removing the tax issue right now if we can, if the board ultimately wants to do that. And then they would look to nonprofit or whatever other thing to demolish those, to then put something on that's usable.
So, so is there, is there a tax portion that went towards the trailer home itself and then another tax portion that was on the land? I mean, all of us, all of us who are property.
It's personal.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's personal property. So it's, it's not anything to do with the land. It's just the mobile home itself that's on the land.
So the land is in good standing? Okay, and then another question I have, I guess, I know there can be problems with getting certificates of title on these manufactured homes through the state. Do we know where we stand on those?
I believe that's what, you know, part of the process that we're trying to do here is to alleviate those steps to get to that point, to get those titles.
I guess what I'm trying to get at here is who, who was responsible for paying the taxes to begin with? If, if, if there's, if the taxes on the land, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the Co-op's responsibility to pay those taxes and?
The taxes, from what I'm understanding, the taxes on the land are up to date. The way the mobile home tax works is the organization, the Co-op is paying the land tax on all of it.
Okay.
The resident who's paying the land or the rent to put their mobile home on it is being taxed for the value of the mobile home. So what we're talking about is waiving the taxes on the mobile home, not the land, because the land is up to date, correct?
And to your question, it's the person who was living there and owned that and those people are gone. They've abandoned the property and left and they can't be located and have not paid and now they just, it's just sitting there.
And does the county bill them for that tax, the homeowners, separate than the?
Yeah.
Okay. We bill, we bill the tenant and we bill the, for the land separately.
Park.
Park, okay.
Correct.
All right, now I'm.
So then, if I'm looking at the totals, what we're talking about, it says page 46, which I don't think that makes sense, but the total amount to be waived is the $2,333.98. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then that does not include the prepay amount of $744 for 2023?
Right, Lori is, she's waiving that requirement to have the taxes prepaid.
Okay.
Because they have values on them, so there's going to be taxes for 2023, but they're not out yet.
Okay.
So she's, yeah, she's waiving that requirement.
So my question is, by waiving that, that waives what is past due as of May 1st, 2023? We're not anticipating any conflict at the end of, in November, when the other part is due?
Yeah, the first half is due in August and the second half is due in November for mobile homes.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with when those dates are, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Have these been vacant since 2018?
No, I can't tell you as far as when they became vacant, but there were values on them and so they were being taxed. The mobile home park, as of January 2nd of each year, they let the assessor's office, city or county, know who's residing there at the time.
So why do we wait five years before we decide to collect taxes on these?
Well, I think we've been trying to collect, we've been trying to collect taxes, I think only now recently with the, with Bennett Park, the Co-op is coming forward trying to deal with the blighted properties to prevent future blighted properties within the park. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, growing up in Morehead, I'm very aware of this residential area and know that it's proximity to schools, there are children that live within these communities. And so I, I think what the cooperative is trying to do makes a lot of sense. The difficulty with owning a mobile home is that it's, it's not easy to move if your circumstances change. It's difficult to sell a property if you're next to houses that have been abandoned. So I certainly feel like this makes a lot of sense in upgrading the value of the park entirely. You know, I certainly feel that it will prevent future issues there. I'm hopeful that because of, it is difficult to understand, but I think because Bennett Park owns the land, we're assured, assured some components of restoration there. And so I would make a motion to waive $2,333.98 on the parcels.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to second, any further discussion?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I had an opportunity as police chief, this Co-op was put together prior to me coming to Morehead, but I worked with Mr. Bennett and Mrs. Bennett out there early in the efforts that were done here. And this was done to provide affordable housing, decent housing, and particularly, a lot of the, the efforts at Bennett Park revolved addressing the needs of the kids in that area, after-school study sessions, all that. This is a good reinvestment on our part, I think, to keep the level of housing in that, in Bennett Park up to standard, to where we have affordable housing out there that people have access to. So I think it's a good move on our part. If it establishes a precedent, I think it establishes one that we just need to be more diligent in not letting the years tick by and the cost of this increase. So, yeah, the motion's on the floor, but that's a component I think we need to be aware of.
Well, that's my concern, if we're setting the precedence, if you know you're going to move in two years, why pay your taxes or something like that? You know, just take off in two years.
I think, I'm sorry, Annette.
I was just going to say, these are mobile homes and we have no recourse to collect, you know, to collect it. If we do not waive it, it won't be collected.
That's true, I agree with that.
What I was going to say, I think part of the uncertainty that it's, it's hard to maybe put into words is what that, that underpass project did to the park. You know, there were components where they had been bought and sold, demoed a large portion of that and, you know, I, just by driving by there, you know that there's been some significant challenges with, with that, so maybe that played into it.
Mr. Chair, I, I do agree that, you know, and I, I don't think that's the only park or place in Morehead that, that can have some blighted issues. And I, I do appreciate the fact that there's an interest on the part of the landowners to try to improve on that the best that they can, when they can. So I, you know, I'm going to support this motion. I, I'm disappointed that, you know, that in this particular case, those people, unlike a home, you know, most homes that are around, you just don't walk away from that value. But once you get into some of these situations on these more mobile home type deals, it's a little easier to do. And then ultimately, every taxpayer in Morehead is making up for this waiver of these, of these taxes, so. Or everybody in Clay County for that matter is so. But the blighted issue is still significant important, and important to improve on, so.
If I may, I view that as a cost against the community also. So as long as Bennett Park itself is in good standing, I, I think it's out of our, that part's out of our control from a county aspect, so.
Anything else? Any call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes, okay. Thank you, Ken. Okay, next thing is, Brian requests approval of the Phila Part-Time Witness, Victim Witness Coordinator position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did budget for this as of the 2023 budget, we just haven't, up to this point, filled it, but we're looking to advertise now and request on the board to officially authorize it so we can fill it.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve Phila Part-Time Victim Witness Coordinator position.
Second. We got a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, we'll go into committee reports. Kevin, you wanna start us out this week?
Me? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear, sure, I can. Going back, looks like we go back two weeks here, so on the twenty-third, we did have a, an insurance committee meeting and went over, we did some claims review, talked about our dental contract. Back, I can't even remember all of the things that we talked about here.
Happens as we get older.
Yeah.
I've noticed that quite a bit.
And I, you know, and I, there was, there was certainly, we're looking at what the potential renewal rates would be had, again, had we had the guaranteed rate set this next year for 2024, it's gonna be eight percent, is that correct, Steve? Is it eight percent? And I think outside of that, had we not had that, we would have been looking at numbers closer to thirty percent. But at the same point in time, it's an indication of what's to come, once that three-year guarantee is up, and that's, and that's where we've been talking about in the past, and certainly have been advocating that we need to be establishing this fund so that it might be in the county's best interest to self-insure at some point in time, which a lot of the bigger counties throughout the state are doing, and doing successfully, so. I don't know if, maybe Paul will have more to add to that. That afternoon, we also had a collaborative meeting, I'm gonna defer my report, I represent the Lake, Lakes Country Service Cooperative on that board, so I'm gonna defer to Paul to give the report on that, and if there's something that I can add to it, I'll do it at that time. On the twenty-fourth, we had a Prairie Lakes Solid Waste meeting in Perron. Everything is operating well. The really good news on this, and this is a credit to our, what's happening now with our, having a full amount of drivers and our transfer station, you know, we were, at one time I reported, we were down, I think, close to eighteen hundred tons in delivery compared to what we were supposed to have, have going there. That number is, as of the last, the date of that meeting on the twenty-fifth, was down to eight hundred tons short, so we're really gaining ground on that. And the goal amongst all of our counties is to be within plus or minus five hundred. So we're, we're getting there, and Cory's working hard on that, and, and the folks at, Todd even from the city, who is part of that process and loading these trucks, and they're doing a good job in, in that regard. We have a budget meeting scheduled to come up to start preparing for the 2024 budget. We paid off our, our bond payment, and usually we've barely had enough in the bank to do that. Even after making the bond payment, now we have eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in the bank, and that compared to seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand the year before, so we're in good shape there. And, and on top of that, which we didn't have before, we have a million and forty thousand dollars in an internal service fund. So we've, we've come a long way in really turning that place around. Now the only thing that we have to watch for, we had a lot of discussion regarding PFAS, and, you know, originally the MPCA wanted us to voluntarily do testing, and we declined that, and so now they've come back and said, well, if you're not gonna voluntarily do it, we might be make, forcing you to do it, which, like, we didn't see that coming. You know, so, and I, I know it's similar to what our, we had a coalition of landfills that went together to do our own testing, and I think right now we're working together with the other waste energy facilities that, keep in mind, our waste energy facility is a little bit different than the others, is ours, ours is a waste energy, but it, it only provides steam to local customers. Some of these other ones provide it to the grid, and that, that's a difference, and there's some change in legislation that's affecting those more than it, than it is with Prairie Lakes. So, and then we're, we continue to deal with that, what to do with ash, once that Otter Tail County landfill no longer has room for it, so we're actually having a board meeting in June at the Pope Douglas landfill, where they have an ash conversion system, where they put it into material for roads, so we're gonna go look at that. Thursday morning, we had our solid waste advisory committee meeting, there was very, not very much on the agenda, things are going well there. Cory gave a good report, Shannon talked about some things, and we did talk a little bit more. At one time, we had talked about joining forces with Morehead on buying a wood burner, now, now with this ash borer issue coming forward, and we don't, you know, I think Commissioner Mojo and I were quite surprised when, because we always thought that we were gonna enter into a partnership with the city on that, and it turns out that the city had, has purchased one, but our, our previous solid waste director had just opted out, and I, I was quite surprised that that happened with, without any knowledge on our part, because, because certainly, you know, we were looking at that as a potential for outside the city of Morehead people too, and, and right now, the only people who can, can bring trees there are people within the city, you know, for burning, but there is, there is some, something going on about another type or something, so we're gonna have a, that's gonna be on the agenda for next month to talk more about, about that issue. That afternoon, we had the MCC JPA meeting, and we, we did, we did quite a few appraisal review recommendations for going out for offers on, on lands. We did enter into, or agreed to some negotiation settlements on a couple of properties, and then we also did, acted on some farm leases for 2023. That afternoon, we also had the diversion board of authority meeting, nothing really new to report there other than things just keep moving along on that project, and we did approve a few task order amendments on that. Then on the twenty-third, or excuse me, the, it was the thirty-first, Wednesday, the thirty-first, we did have a, I've got down here May thirtieth, so whatever that day is, we did have our first meeting of the West Central Regional Water Group in, in Halsted. It was, it was a, it was a lengthy meeting, but it was worthwhile, because there was an awful lot of issues brought up, and, and we certainly talked about, before the final district is established, that we wanted them to, to give Clay County time to make sure that, if we want to expand what's currently showing there with just our northern tier townships, that we, we want to be able to do that and include it in the original district, as opposed to having to come back and try to amend that later. One of the things, another thing we talked about was the government, should it be a, should it be a conventional type of a board, or should it be a joint powers? I think the consensus of everybody there seemed to favor not going the joint powers route. I think there'll, I think we still probably need to look at more pros and cons in each, and then it was talked about what size board it should be, and I think the overall consensus at that time was that we should be looking at a nine-member board through the three counties that are involved, which is Pope, Norman, and Clay, and that nine-member board would, would be, those positions would be appointed by county, county commissions, and it would be based on population. So right now, under the current format that we have there with just those northern tier townships, Clay has a much smaller population base in it, which would mean we more than likely only, maybe only have one of those nine members on there. But if that expands, which is certainly possible, then, then that would change that, and we would have more representation on there. And I, Frank is our, I was the alternate on that, Frank's the delegate on there, and he would probably have more to add to that. I think that concludes my report. Just give me one second, Mr. Chair, whoops. That there was, we had, we also had a, a meeting with the Triple RDC about the Triple RDC, just a.
On May twenty-third, yeah.
On May twenty-third, yes, there we go. And that was just a discussion amongst Dave and I and Steve, and we had, the sheriff was here, just kinda preparing for a meeting with our small cities moving forward with future contracts, and I think we're, Steve, you're working on a date for that to happen, you can report on that, I suppose, but, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I too have been desperately looking at my calendar, realizing I forgot to give myself notes on the first week of our meetings, but on the twenty-third, again, I attended the rural contract discussion with the Triple RDC, with our county administrator, Commissioner Campbell, and the sheriff, and that's gonna continue here in the future. On the twenty-fourth, virtually attended the diversion authority finance committee meeting. It was fairly short and sweet, we passed a few items on to the diversion authority board for approval, but it was just, and the following day, these actions were approved, it was a general business meeting, pretty short and sweet in nature. On the thirty-first, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony of the, with several of the other commissioners here of the withdrawal management and detox facility. A good occasion, a lot of work from staff has gone into that, I'm real proud that we, we are moving forward on that, and the commissioners involved and, and the county staff, it's been, it's been a good effort. On the first of June, I virtually attended the Emergency Communication Network Legislative Committee. Talked about some of the needs we've got in public safety, telecommunicator training and certification. There's a roadmap on what we'd like to see as a committee that's being circulated around, trying to get as much feedback as we can through July, and then we'll sit down and look at future legislation in that area. This is simply to get dispatchers certified and to establish training criteria for them, or curriculum for them. Had a discussion about some of the areas of the state and the metro, and some organizations who weren't sending members to our meetings, and that's an ongoing process that we're working on. Had a legislative update, talked about seven million dollars that's been appropriated through the legislature for PSAP updates, for next generation 911, two million for end-users for equipment related to the armor system. The health department now has a twelve-cent fee that's gonna be on your phone bill for 988 services, which is good, that's funding it, and it's letting it stand on its own. The 403 legislation, that's updating state legislation on emergency communication systems. Has not been updated, I wanna say in twenty years. It failed in the legislature twice before this year, and it once again failed. A lot of the, what we've identified, I think, is the lack of technical understanding on the part of the legislature and an overwhelming presence of lobbyists from telecommunication networks that are giving them the information, and they're not listening to the information that's fact-based. Cut through all the technological issues, the telecommunication networks build the state, and it's about seven million dollars a year for a system that takes hard-line phone lines and translates the location of those lines over to PSAPs, to dispatch centers. The, the billing, the cost of that service by the telecommunication networks is based in an era where over ninety percent of the phone calls that come in needed that technology provision from the telecommunication networks. Right now, eight percent of the phone calls that come into a PSAP are from landlines, are from hard-wire sources. This technology is no longer needed when you're talking about cellular phone use. We are still paying the telecommunication networks as if over ninety percent of the calls coming in were landlines, and efforts to get updated, modern language into our state ordinance or statute that runs the emergency network is, has been curtailed now, three years in a row, over these issues. And I'm not sure what we're gonna do, other than try and make the public aware that this is a situation that needs to be addressed, and our legislators need to address it, so that's for the next session. On the second, I attend, virtually attended the Partner for Health, Community Health Board. Talked about a regional dental initiative, over thirty-five hundred kids have been provided education through this effort in the schools, and another effort they're doing there is helping find dentists who accept MA. There are some mobile services out there that, that are helpful in that. Becker County nonprofit dental, there's a clinic being opened up, Frazy. By Apple Tree Dental, which is gonna be helpful in that area. We had a presentation on WIC food issues and kinda brought up to speed on how that process is working. Kathy McKay gave us a legislative update, just south of ten million dollars per year support local health departments for transformational funding, and I, then we had a fairly good discussion about the cannabis issue. Health departments are going to be charged with community education, and it's, there is some identification that they'll be responsible for it and funded for it, even though it's not a particularly good thing for public health that cannabis is being legalized. A lot of funding formulas are not out, and it may cause a need for adjustment to budgets, because they, the funding formulas will come out after local governmental entities have started their budget process. We had discussion about food pool and lodging, some fee increases, which led to a pretty intense discussion about, from Otter Tail County, about the issues they've got with people using lake properties as bed, or as short-term rentals, and how that should be regulated, and it looks like it's pretty disruptive to property owners out there who are located near some of these rentals, where they get disruptive and, and it's difficult to maintain control, and sheriffs have to be called, and parties have to be broken up, so we had a discussion about some of the priorities Otter Tail's got on that. And that completes my, my report.
I'll go back to.
Your microphone.
I'll start out with the collaborative that you were starting with there, Kevin, back on May twenty. Back on May 23rd, you finished that up. Once again, looking at our 24 budget and at the end of the day, that was, excuse me, I need to back up. At the beginning, the first thing of order was making sure we had, getting the new coordinator on board, which was approved. Jenna Kayla was offered that position, accepted. Her work will begin on July 1st. With that, the previous coordinator for years and years has been Carolyn Snernit, and she was offered a part-time position under contract to help in this coordination from what her work has been on to Jenna as the new coordinator, to help with that transition. And that'll occur over the next year. A small funding piece goes along with that. Then we came to the budget. Budget looks in good order. Many thanks again to all people on the board, but Kevin, being the numbers guy, you added a lot of good to that conversation. And we came out really in pretty good, very good shape, I think. And I think we offered a stipend at the end for the years of work that Carolyn had done and more pressing work needed to be done by her for this collaborative group to stay in line with the requirements with the state of Minnesota. And so she was given a little stipend as she ends her duties at the end of, end of June. Then I move on to May 25th. We had a CAP LP meeting, our monthly meeting down in Breckenridge. Commissioner Remojo and I went down there together, went through the financials. There was a review of the legislative session and with a lot of, there was certainly a lot of money moving in through early childhood education along with mental health. And there's a lot of work and expansion that will be done within CAP LP to fit these needs. And if you want to elaborate more, that'd be fine, but overall, it was sort of general in terms, they know what's coming, but we don't know exact amounts yet and certainly nor the size of the grants and the opportunities. But a lot of things were passed by legislature. On June 1st, really had an enjoyable evening. So the historic, excuse me, the Historical Cultural Society of Clay County had their annual meeting. And we had it at the MCPS along with the board. We had a total of about 45 people came. I mentioned this last month or whatever, but we had two board members retiring. Jean Prem had been on for 18 years and then Gloria Lee, I think it was 14 years for her, and we thanked them for their service. Four new board members were elected and put on the board. So look forward to meeting them and working with them over the next year. Along with that, we had a presentation by Marcus Kruger, our programming director. And if I may, I want to take just a minute or two because this, I just think is good for everybody to hear. So anyway, he quickly gave a great presentation on the beginning of Clay County, if I may. And so Clay County was established in 1860 and it was named at that time Breckenridge County. And that was named after John C. Breckenridge, who had been Vice President of the United States from 1857 to 1861. Minnesota Governor Ramsey at the time then appointed to this area the first county commissioners in 1861. One of those was RM Probstfield and two others. However, this group never met as a commission. After the Civil War, Breckenridge, who we were named after, joined the Army of the South and pressured by Minnesota residences, it resulted in the state legislature changing the name in March 6th, in, excuse me, on March 6th of 1862, rescinding the name of Breckenridge, and then we became Clay County in honor of Henry Clay. And the other part of the, along with this history I'm tying about, we talked about, he gave a very good detail of how and when and why the Northern Pacific, as it came to the Red River, where it was in fact going to cross the river. And the amount of speculators right along the river, running south of Moorhead, what would be on the very south end of Moorhead, all the way up to north of Georgetown, almost all that land was bought by private speculators, hoping that the railroad would be right there and they'd make their fortune and that would be the big settlement crossing the river. Anyway, there was a gentleman in, in more a name, I believe it was Don Holes, last name was Holes for sure. Anyway, he was one of those people. He had knowledge, inside knowledge of the Northern Pacific railroad and acquiring and setting up towns along the way. And so he had speculated on some land, I believe it was, it was like a hundred and some acres. And anyway, of that, he kept 24 acres for himself. And anyway, long and short of it, he then approached Northern Pacific is where this could be. He'd donate them the land, he keeps 24 acres, and long and short of it, that's where the bridge went through Moorhead. So you can read more about this, but it was fascinating. And so, once he came, Moorhead became a quick tent town. 400 residents immediately moved into the area and it truly became the Wild West. And there were gunfights on the street were frequent. And finally, for a year or two, and finally, there was a gunfight that took place on the streets in 1872. The two gunfighters killed each other and a bystander was also killed. At that point, the good citizens of Clay County at the time had had enough and they didn't want any more. And so, so with that, on March 27th, 1872, they raised up and they got the legislature and they declared Clay County as an organized county and instructed the governor to appoint three county commissioners within 10 days. So on April 25th, these commissioners, excuse me, Peter Wilson, Andrew Holes, who I talked about earlier, and were appointed. And they met to do their duties on the 25th. On the next day, Probstfield was, became, RM Probstfield became our first attorney and James Blanchard became our first sheriff. And then on April 26th, just a couple months, or a little later, 1872, that's considered the birthday of Clay County, as they had their first meeting of Clay County government. And that's the rest of the story.
Looks like we should have Marcus. I'm here to talk to him.
Yeah, he's awesome. He'd do much better than I. Anyway, that was very good. Then on June 5th, just yesterday, had more city planning, they're updating their residential codes. We finally, with the information we received as the commission, we approved what was presented that'll go on to the city council and then they'll make their final decisions on that. That's it.
All right. Joining?
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. A couple weeks ago, I attended the AMC legislative update that they put on. It is just, I'm so grateful to have AMC's presence at the Capitol. It really helped us understand the pulse and the speed of decisions that happened at the Capitol this year. A lot to unpack and you all are receiving those recaps, so I won't go too far into it. But there is a significant amount of funding that's been unlocked for counties. I know there's over a million dollars, the CPA, that we will be receiving. I know the sheriff's office has a large one-term funding amount. The sheriff's working to identify how he'd like to utilize that. And we'll just see how much the rest of the decisions cost us, but we'll go from there. Later that week, I had a meeting with Commissioner Gross and staff to discuss the fingerprinting issue that we had sent a letter to DHS with Shelley Mayor Carlson. I think that DHS had identified the holdup at the Fargo site and had hired and provided hours for increased availability, including Saturday hours at the Fargo sites. That is good news there. They had identified that they were working with two Minnesota sites to provide an additional opportunity on the Minnesota side for the fingerprinting process. However, in discussions after this meeting have identified that they might not financially be feasible, just the way the contract is set up, it is a substantial financial loss for those sites to set up shop. So we'll continue to work with communicating those concerns to DHS. I will say, we did have the commissioner of the department present on the call, so I appreciate that she made an opportunity to be there for that, but more to come, but hopeful that in the short term, the increased availability at the Fargo site will really, really help. That week, I also attended the SWAC committee meeting as Commissioner Campbell had updated. Not anymore to update there, just I know there's continued concerns on glass recycling. We've heard that concern throughout the community. Residents can drop off their recycling at the transfer station there for that. I also attended the MCC JPA meeting that was held that same day, hopeful that we're continuing to come to some resolution with landowners. As Commissioner Campbell updated, we did sign a purchase agreement pending legal review with some landowners in the staging area. I attended the CAP LP meeting in Breckenridge as Commissioner Kravenoff also discussed. We had an update on Child Care Connections and even though it's community action, Lakes and Prairies, Clay and Wilkin, they do contract for services all throughout the region. Child Care Connections provides services throughout the entire state of North Dakota and several counties in western Minnesota. Updating them on the fingerprinting issues, increasing availability was something that Maria Steen, the director there, was really excited about. That's been something that the providers have continued to discuss with her, how challenging that is. We did approve a COLA increase to align with the Head Start COLA increases and did discuss the social media policies for staff. We'll continue to discuss that later. And then throughout the legislative, the bills that were agreed through the legislative session, there is some substantial money coming through to community action agencies, particularly in the areas of housing, Head Start. They will, they're really excited about that. They will need to increase some staff to deal with that, but certainly is a needed channel of relief there. I attended a roundtable last week. Past CEO of, or past deed commissioner, Commissioner Grove, now has taken a position as CEO of the Star Tribune. They came to Clay County to discuss with different representatives how, what we're hearing in terms of news and how our citizens receive news. And I think it was great to see some outward Minnesota outreach through the Tribune, so I attended that. And attended the groundbreaking for our Withdrawal Management Facility. And I can't reiterate enough gratitude to staff for making that happen. I know that in collaboration with our builder, Gert's Construction, and our architect, Klein McCarthy, they really worked to get that going. And I agree, I am excited about seeing movement out there and hopeful that we can get our permitting through the state finalized. I know that continues to be a little bit of a holdup, but as soon as that comes through, we'll be good to go. And I believe that concludes my reports.
Okay. My meetings, we're at the Dilwood Fire Department, they had a sort of a press conference announcing that they got their $5 million grant that they requested, so they'll be starting to work on their building out there. May 24th, meeting establishing the fingerprinting thing where Jenny's already covered that. May 30th, the West Central Regional Water District that Kevin and I attended. It's been quite a beat, like City of Thelton's requesting 3.4 million for their project, City of Climax requested 5.1 million, Norman County requested 5.3 million. So there's a lot of people, I mean, not a lot of people, but a lot of counties and stuff like that that are already working on this thing. And it's discussed, we are looking at how much of Clay County is, wants to be involved in this. And I attended meetings at Georgetown last night and I was attending meetings at Holly. Holly hasn't had much discussion on it, but they're aware of it, but Georgetown's very much interested in this, so I plan on probably attending you and City Council meeting tonight, so see what their interests are. Right now, they're not really in the program yet. I don't know if they expressed anything or not. There, let's see, Partnership for Health, June 2nd. Dave discussed on already, but yeah, Frazi is having a new dental, Northern Dental Access is coming to Frazi, building a place. It was interesting to hear from the people that, you know, when they were handing out free toothbrushes and I figured, well, that's done in a lot of places, but they were talking about people sharing toothbrushes, you know, with some of these families. So I don't know, we probably don't know what that's like, you know, but when you hear about it happening and stuff, it's just sharing toothbrushes. Okay, you know, it's just, you know, they're doing a heck of a job out there trying to get these families involved. And then we did, unless, he said Kathy McKay gave us a legislative update. We had a discussion on the fees that are being charged. I think there's an overall 10% increase in all the fees. They had a whole page of fees that are charged. I can't, I was going to have Ken talk about it while I was here, but there's a lot of fees and they're all going up by 10%, you know, so they're discussing that. And yes, there was a discussion from Otter Tail County on fees being charged in places on the lakes that, I mean, camp, not campgrounds, places that are holding parties that are, don't have permits for sometimes, or probably have permits, but they're getting very loud stuff and uncontrollable, so they want to do something about that, you know, but I don't know, I guess it's a police problem, whatever, sheriff's problem, I mean, excuse me. Some discussion on that. Saturday, oh, excuse me, I did go to the Clay County Withdrawal Management Detox Facility and thank you for the, you guys putting that on, Jackie and Mark, and I'm sure Steve had a lot of involvement on that. I think he was overdressed for the occasion, but whatever. No, it was a good thing, and I see driving by there this morning, that they're out there working. So I don't know if they got their permit or if they're just doing other things. That can't be done without the permit, though.
That's the second part.
Okay, okay, very good. Went to breakfast on the farm last Saturday. I mean, not that there's a meeting that I went to there, but I think it's one of the biggest ones I've go to there every year, and I think it's one of the biggest ones they ever had.
They served over 3,000 people.
It was just, they just kept pouring in there, you know, and I know that line for that breakfast line was about 100 long, 100 people long when I went left, you know, and it's just, but it's glad to see Shannon Thompson was out there giving a presentation, not presentation, but a booth there explaining what they do. And she said she's getting a lot of questions on the new detox center and stuff like that. And I saw Mark Sloan was out there with, helping out there.
And Randy Nelson from Extension as well.
Okay, very good. Yeah, that's right, Randy was out there too. Yeah, that's right, yeah, Randy was out there too, yes. And then, like I said, the last night, I went to meetings at Georgetown and at Holly, and just give an update, and both cities seem to be having no problems, I mean, as far as that they need the county's assistance at this time, so. Good meetings, very good. That was my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, or two weeks ago, I participated in the dispatch discussion that we mentioned by our commissioners earlier. We are tentatively scheduled to meet with representatives from Barnesville on July 17th in regards to that contract that ended at the end of this year. Participated in the Insurance Committee meeting on the 23rd. I think that's been addressed. We did talk about some dental claims. We are self-insured there, and so we're trying to figure out a monthly fee to make sure that we remain enough funds in there. We also talked about a survey that was put out by HR in regards to benefits. Participated also in the Dilworth Fire Emergency News Conference, thanks to Dilworth and Moorhead for putting the work in to get that done each year. 24th, we had management, talked about our budgets. Recur, retreat survey has gone out. If you haven't filled that out, please go ahead and look to do that. Also talked about legislative impacts within each of our departments. On the 24th, I participated in the fingerprint discussion that has been addressed. That afternoon, met with Commissioner Kravenhoff on a series of county issues. On the 24th, I also met with Sheriff Empteen in regard to the public safety one-time aide that Commissioner Mojo had mentioned. He'll most likely be bringing some ideas to pick forward here in the coming, coming weeks. Also that afternoon, met with, talked with Brian Melton, just to have initial discussions on the potential impacts of cannabis legislation in Clay County. So there'll be more to come on that. 25th, I participated in SWAC, which has been addressed, also NCC JPA that afternoon. Also, I think just an interesting note, milestone, yesterday, the diversion did report that the Horace Inlet Structure is near completion, and so that's a pretty significant milestone for the project. 26th, I participated in the MACA legislative update, so we've covered much of those issues already. On the 26th, also followed up with the citizen concern about, in regards to valuation questions that have been ongoing. On the 30th, I virtually attended the West Central Regional Water District Initial Work Group meeting that's been covered. I do think in addition to Clay County, kind of looking at the footprint that they have, I think Polk County has also indicated that they're also going to look at the potential expanding their footprint. 31st, I met with representatives from ROARs and the city of Moorhead in regards to the Moritz Center Mall redevelopment project. Again, I think that we've put some information out on our social media, on our webpage in regards to the fact that we do have a contract at the Moritz Center Mall through November 30th of 2025. There's been a great deal of discussion out there. We've actually added it to the, in the DMV to provide a brief update to our citizens as they sit there, so they understand of where we'll be. Also talked with this group about the board's actions as far as our current plan moving forward with looking at both potentially building or moving into a separate area, and did invite Mr. ROARs to come and provide an update as he has done earlier in the project. And so I think sometime later this June, Mr. ROARs and maybe some additional representatives will be here. 31st, participated in the ribbon cutting. Again, just continued to do the thanking of Jackie, the Gert's, Gert's staff, Joe and his, his staff and Mark for all the great work that they did in setting, setting up that exciting day. The first, I met with Justin. We kind of talked about on our webpage, you've seen that we have a county road closure, County Road Number 12, from 28th Avenue to 90th Avenue. We had some cement upheaved due to the heat, and so that project is going to be going on till hopefully right around the 16th, so there'll be, there is a closure and a detour that is.
I wrote 11, isn't it?
County Road 11, sorry, yes. And so there's more information on our webpage if you like to see that. That day, met with Mark Sloan and Ron Dunn, a series of issues within their department. That afternoon, I met with Nick Lindberg from MCIT. He's our new loss prevention contact through MCIT. We talked about overviews of our coverage, talked about where we are as a county. I think one of the things that he provided insight, and we've talked at different times, from a formula standpoint, Clay County is one of the, has a strong culture of safety, and that shows through our claims. And so he was wanting to be sure that we pointed that out to you. Had a department head evaluation on the 5th. Yesterday, Jackie and I met with Rocky Schneider from AD2S in regards to the West Central Water District, and I don't know, maybe if you want to jump in that you're.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, as you have mentioned, and Commissioner Campbell, regarding Clay County wanting additional information with determining what Clay County needs, so we do have on our website, as well as our social media, a post, and on, like I mentioned, on our website, on our main page, on the county spotlight, within that article or post, there is a link that residents and business owners can take a survey, a brief survey. Basically, it'll help, help us determine the feasibility for the water within Clay County for residents. So, so if citizens and residents can go on there, and if you have water quality issues, take that brief survey, so we can gather more information.
I think AD2S is gonna meet with all the cities too, aren't they?
Uh, Mr. Chair, they have, commissioners, they have reached out, I think, to two, a couple of the cities already, and then we'll also be doing two, two different township meetings.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate what Jackie said there. I think one, one thing that also should be, those who are interested in, especially in outlying areas, not only water quality issues, but water quantity issues. I think both of them are, one, one could have one issue, one might have another one, but they're, you know, both of them could probably be beneficial in, at least going on and click, clicking this link and going through the questionnaire that's available out there, that helps determine their needs and potential being part of the district that's being formed. And that process is going through the courts.
I guess that was one of my concerns, is where, where are they getting all the water from? I mean, they're just talking, being across the river, they get all kinds of water, and we don't get the quality of water. I don't know why that is happening.
Just a couple of other things, just to touch base on, again, as I think Mark mentioned yesterday, with the, with the redevelopment project, they're at the Moritz Center Mall area. There are some fencing areas that have happened that are, right now, temporary, but are limiting the parking for the DMV for our citizens on the south, south end of the Moritz Center Mall. And so there is signage now that, that there's more available parking on the north side. Just a note to all of you, and we'll have this noticed, is that the Buffalo Red River Water District is interest, is going to be having a public hearing on the 26th at 7:00 PM in regards to Stony Creek Restoration Project. If there's interest to attend there, that would be, again, 7 o'clock, 7:00 at the watershed office. We, in regards to the Withdrawal Management Detox, there's a, there's a twofold piece. We have the permit through the state. We also have the permit of the project through Department of Human Services. We did receive that permit last week, so again, important hurdle to move forward based on that construction. Also, a meeting that we'll have posted, MetroCog is hosting a special joint meeting on June 29th at 12:30 to review the FM Regional Housing Needs Analysis and Strategies Report. It has the ability for you to attend both in person or through the Zoom. And so again, Jackie will have that. That's the 29th at 12:30. We made the, we've been offered and accepted the offer at the Clay County Fair this year. We'll be having Clay County Government Days on July 14th from noon to 4:30, or noon to 4:00. And so certainly appreciate the opportunity to be there and share the great things that are happening here in the county. Just a reminder for our citizens, next week, our board meeting is at 5:00 PM, because we will be having the Board of Equalization to follow at 6:30. And so, and just one final thing, we did receive a notification this week in regards to our commitment guardianship and conservatorship contract, that the attorney through Framstead Law has determined that they are going to give their 60-day notice. And so we will be bringing forward the request for an RFP for those. With that, that concludes our.
Any further?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chair, if I could, I forgot to mention too about the groundbreaking, that I did attend that, and I just also want to show, give my thanks to all those who worked hard on, on that effort. Jackie and Steve and Kathy and Troy and all of those, it was, I think it was a well-attended event, and it's good to see that process moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further, Jackie? Your father spoke up a little bit ago. Thank you very much. Okay, we're adjourned.